Hello, everybody. We'd like to open the meeting. This is the March 13th Board of Education Work Session. I'm going to begin by pointing out the exits. We have two exits in the rear of the room and then two exits behind us here on the dais. Let's all stand for the pledge. Okay, we're going to start this evening with our first recognition of visitors. There will be two opportunities for a public comment at tonight's meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. First session will be capped at 30 minutes total. Anyone who does not get to speak now will be able to do so later. Comments including obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, or statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Anyone wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. Finally, please remember there's no cross dialogue between speakers and members of the board. Anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit comments to three minutes. And if you would like a direct response and care to leave your contact information, there is a sheet right at the dais next to Linda. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Claire Neville. I'm a special education teacher at CCMS. I'm currently doing my administration internship. And I am joined by Caitlin Nolan, 7th grade ELA teacher, unicycle enthusiast at Cornwall Central Middle School. We are both here to talk to you about a very exciting event coming up very soon at Cornwall Central High School. It's Wednesday, the 29th of March from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. And it is our multicultural night. This is our, it has been our annual event. As we all know, February of 2020 was the last time we had this multicultural night. It was a wonderful evening with many clothing, different traditional clothing, dances, songs, games, and of course, that was our last hurrah. I'd be remiss if we didn't mention that this is our third year, third anniversary of closing. Today is March 13th, and we closed March 13th of 2020. So we are very excited, CCSD community, to announce that our district-wide multicultural night is back. The last time we were able to host this, as I said, was in February of 2020. If you attended that celebration, which was hosted at Cornwall Central Middle School, it was so well-attended that we are now moving the festivities to Cornwall Central High School this year. What makes this event so special is our community highlighting their heritage with so much pride. The food is always amazing, absolutely. And the presentations and demonstrations of so many cultural backgrounds are always beautiful. We have experienced traditional clothing, dances, songs, games, and more because of this event. So if you have an idea on how to recognize your culture, go for it.
Take it away, Claire.
Thanks so much. So there are two ways that you can go about signing up. One way would be through the signup genius that was sent out in parent emails. And you can plan on contributing to the evening, like Ms. Nolan was talking about food. We're going to have some dance demonstrations. We're going to have a bag paper, so just in time for St. Patrick's Day. And the paper permission slips can be returned to the main office of your child's school. And then we're going to be working on making sure that we are accounting for all of those things. If you're unable to attend or unable to make a dish, you are able to participate by offering a donation of paper products because the turnout in 2020 was so huge that we're definitely going to need some paper products for people to eat their tasty snacks on. And it is truly a community event that we are super excited to have back and proud to host. And we look forward to seeing everybody on Wednesday, March 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the high school. And this event is open to our Universal pre-K, all the way up to grade 12 student and families. And if anybody has any questions, they can contact Ms. Nolan or myself, both at the middle school, and we thank you for your time, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. I trust that you're going to be doing like a co-hosting, like a Tina Fey, Amy Poehler type of situation? Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Now, and the fight begins. Who's Tina? Who's Amy? Anybody else? Okay, so we will, first, before we move on, I just want to provide some responses to comments that were made last time. So at a previous meeting, we received a question from Mrs. Dawn Lynch regarding the middle school hall monitors. That was a, those are positions that were in Harvey's first budget presentation. So Mrs. Palumbo actually reached out to Mrs. Lynch directly to answer her questions, but I just wanted to provide a very brief context for anybody who might have had the same question. To paraphrase, Mrs. Lynch essentially asked whether those positions were necessary considering our other needs, indicating that perhaps there were other ways to fill them. Just to clarify, the hall monitors would be there to monitor activity during class time, not between classes. The issue being addressed in broad terms is that students will find ways to coordinate trips to the hallways and other places during class and basically spend too much time outside of class. These hall monitors will make sure that everybody is where they're supposed to be. Megan, feel free to correct me at any moment. And since they'd be primarily doing this during class time, teachers would not be able to fill that duty, which is why the need was raised to bring in outside personnel. Other than that, there were comments from CCTA members. And while I won't get into a detailed response, I just want to recognize that all those comments have been noted and are being taken into account. Okay, that will lead us now to committee reports. I'll go around the horn here. So Larry, anything on facilities?
Actually, yes. We've got a whole lot of things going on. In the figuring the Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 has been approved by SED on March 6th. Going out to bid this week. The bids will be back by April 13th. Recommendations to the Facilities Committee before the April 20th Board Meeting. And at the Board Meeting, you will be presented with those bids for approval. For Phase 2, it will be submitted to SED by the end of May. Incidentally, this was from the last, the March 7th meeting. Bidding will go out by the end of September. And they'll have to take the fields by the end of spring sports. Jason Timo made an impassioned plea to give him one, at least one more season in the spring. The field, the football field, the multipurpose field, will have a water drainage runoff filtration system. Think of it as a huge, like, filter for your pool. They'll be, Jason's setting up a schedule to visit local turf fields to get a better feel for infill. Some of the, one of the things we know right off the bat, we're not using recycled rubber. And the question of cornhusks or, yeah, you know, the, that was, they're trying to get a field that has that to run on it. All the feedback they've been getting is that it's much more slippery. Right, they're bringing students to those visitations also. Turf manufacturers will present to us at the next facilities meeting. A number of them, just so we can understand the differences between the turf and the grass. Our next meeting has been rescheduled to March 28th so that we can, instead of April 11th, so that we can take a look at some of the materials that Harvey has sent for the transfer to Capitol for next year. And that's pretty much the facilities. I did go to the OXPBA meeting, the Orange County School Boards. And it was, there was a presentation there by the Orange County Youth Bureau. It was a fairly in-depth one. I am going to scan and get everybody a copy of this so that you can, you can see the kinds of things that they do and what they're involved with. It was a very informative meeting. The sad part about it was it was not very well-attended. And one of the things that we've noticed is that when we were on Zoom meetings during COVID, it was very well-attended. And once we got back to doing in-person meetings, it was not very well-attended. And so Orange County School Boards is looking at doing either a hybrid, more, you know, they put out a survey and see, you know, what we can do to get the attendance back up. Because there was a lot of good information that is coming out from them that isn't getting out to everybody. That's it, boss.
Thank you, Larry. And to be clear, when you say attendance, you mean attendance from members, not public? Correct, yeah. Great, all right. So moving on, visitation?
So I just got a, one page of, I think, a multi-page kind of synopsis from John. So it looks like he has kind of decided to update the, so we submitted an original report. It wasn't 100% on what the committee wanted, so we met again. And this looks like it's, like I said, part of. So I'll have to take a look at this and maybe get the rest of it. And then we'll look to see what that means, and then we'll wind up submitting another, another version to the, to the board.
To the board. Got it.
If I could just add to that, yeah, Margaret, what that is, I'm trying to kind of like defibrillate or jumpstart the process. I thought we were doing it, and then somewhere along the line over the last couple of months, that process of amending that initial report kind of has maybe taken over by other priorities or something. I'm not quite sure. But because of the lapse of time since we met with the various buildings, I'm trying to bridge the gap and get this to the committee so that the committee can look at it, edit it, comment on it, eventually approve it, and then we can get to the full board on it. So my, my desire, and I don't know about the desires of other committee members, is to have this reconciled by, and presented to the board by our next meeting, which I believe is March 27th. But that's just my goal.
I'd like to add even, I just read what John, I mean, put here, but I think I'd like everybody, the whole committee, to know that there is nothing more to discuss. Margaret, chairing the committee, knows exactly what we're talking about. She prompts us time and time again that, okay, this weekend, next weekend, next weekend.
Guys, with all due respect. With all due respect, this is turning into a,
With all due respect.
It's turning into a de facto visitation committee meeting, though.
With all due respect.
I understand, it seems that the committee has questions that it needs to hash out as a committee. And this is for the report to be brought to the larger board. So I invite you to have that conversation. And then, I mean, what John outlined seems to make sense. And then it'll get to the board by next meeting. That would work. It's, again, that's visitation level, visitation committee level concern. So let you guys figure that out, and then, well, the report will get to the board, and then we'll discuss it then. So audit, Jim is not here, but I will try to tap into my inner Jim and assume that there's, there's nothing to report. Scholarship, we got an update last time. There's nothing further, is there? No? Policy, Teresa?
I am, I'll be talking to Terry and to you to set up, I think, our last, is it our last meeting for the year?
Third round, yeah.
And what we have to go over. And then as soon as we do that, I'll send it out to the rest of the committee. They can look at dates. And hopefully, I won't have shingles again, so I'll be able to show up.
I was going to keep that private, but there you go.
Oh, no, it's okay. Everybody get their shot. Just get your shots.
Impromptu.
Another shot.
Shingles PSA. Thank you, Teresa. Communication Committee, we're going to have our, another forum. We're shooting for the next three weeks. I'm going to have to consult with Linda on some availability, so Linda, stay tuned on that. And that will be our final forum prior to handing over the Communication Committee's schedule to the budget, which will have some budget forums later in the spring, late April, early May. All right, that moves us to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda allows the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who would like to pull a particular item off the Consent Agenda?
Brendan, number two, please.
Got it. Okay, anybody else?
This proposed agenda, schedule, I mean.
Which number?
I'm not sure if, maybe, I want to make sure if I,
Not seven.
Okay.
Calendar adoption, yes.
Okay, the number seven.
Ready? Anybody else? All right, so it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Consent Agenda items as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools. So that is our, those are numbers three through six and eight. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, moving on to just item number two. Let me just pull that up. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the following personnel actions. That's A through H. I'll take that as per document. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion?
So on, these are not numbered, Special and Part-Time Assignments page. So there is a building maintenance mechanic. It says it's a new position. Maybe, my question is, is it a budgeted new position? Which I think is the case, which would make it maybe not as new as I'm thinking. But Harvey, I'm looking at you with the answers, so.
This is a position that the Board approved in the budget last year, and we are only now just filling it.
So it's, It's a budgeted new position?
Correct.
Thank you. That's, that's all I need.
Something to do with when we were talking about doing work in-house?
Correct.
For the, for the Capitol project and a lot of the work that would be done. So obviously, hiring before we were kind of ready to use them wouldn't make sense.
Yes, it just takes time to find somebody qualified.
We wouldn't have needed him yet anyway, well. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Item number seven. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby approve the 2023-2024 student calendar, which is attached. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion?
Discussion, okay. So obviously, it's my first year serving here, and, you know, when the school started, I was surprised to see that there's something called February recession. I'm talking about this current school year. So now that I'm seeing it for the second time, my question is, why do we have now, or proposing a February recession? And I can tell you, I can add, I mean, basically, that's the answer I'm looking at. But I can add that we do have the winter recession. That's Christmas break. We call it winter recession. There's Easter break. We call it spring recession. That's fine. When it comes to the Christmas break last year, this past December, it was only one week. It caused me personally, I'm not sure about other people, but inconveniences. I mean, we do have plans to travel during Christmas break during, due to the shortness of that period, this time around, I could not travel. And by travel, it's not like I'm going to go to the Bahamas or anything. I'm talking about family reunion, getting together, go visit my brother, my brother visiting me. So I had to cancel it altogether, and we spent the whole Christmas break watching TV at home. I mean, it wasn't that fun. So go back to my question. Why do we have a February break, February recess?
So you won't find many districts in the state of New York that have a two-week winter break. Fairfax, where I'm from, it's standard. We have a two-week winter break, but no February recess. But for Orange County, we meet as Orange County Superintendents and give feedback to one another based on what we're seeing in our community and things of that nature. And then we wait for the BOSI's calendar to be adopted. That BOSI's calendar is based on feedback from all superintendents in Orange County. The reason that that's important is that we have to stay as closely aligned to the BOSI's calendar so our kiddos are not missing out on very important instructions. So another way to put that is if we're out for two weeks in December for winter break, and BOSI's is only out for one week, what do we do with our kiddos for all the other five days that BOSI's would be closed? They would be missing that instruction plus that week that we're out on, on winter break. So this would be our third year. Having February recess, we had it 2021. We had it last year, and this would be our third year out of four years with February recess. But short answer, Orange County tries to stick as closely as possible to the BOSI's calendar. The importance of that is our kids not missing out on important instruction.
If I may, just to clarify that slightly, the BOSI's quote-unquote "calendar" is actually created by a committee of superintendents that is coordinated through BOSI's, but it's actually made by a committee of local superintendents. It's, BOSI's doesn't create the calendar.
I mean, yeah, thanks. I appreciate, I mean, the explanation. But again, to break for one whole week in February while nobody else in the whole world is doing the same thing? I mean, to me, it strikes me as something strange.
There's, there's tons of districts all across New York State that have that February recess. I just know because when I'm in Florida, all I saw were Cornwall, Cornwall families there as well. Yeah, it's, so the same argument that you're making for travel for winter break, other families are making for travel in February. But I would, I would argue that you will be hard-pressed to find New York districts with a two-week winter break.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're out there, but in our area, it's typically a February recess.
Go for it, Richard.
Yep.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we have in the district, I don't know what the committee's called, but like a calendar scheduling committee? That all, you know, teachers and our parents on it, too?
So I didn't pay Richard to tee me up like that, but that's an important, that's an important piece. We do have a calendar committee that looks at my recommendation, makes, gives feedback. So not only are teachers on that committee, administrators. We had a clerical representative, and custodial were invited, para-professionals. So everyone was providing kind of input from both a family perspective and a staff member perspective. So once I get that feedback, you get the calendar that's presented to you today.
So would you say the vast majority of the participants of the committee agreed or, you know, agreed with having a February recess?
Yes, if not all, I would say all but one.
All but one, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and Richard, just to piggyback on what you were saying, when we didn't align ourselves with other districts, which was either last year or the year prior, all hell, all mayhem broke out. And, and the reason that happens is you have maybe parents who may be educators in other New York school districts on break, but their kids are not. So they lose the opportunity to take the cheap flights down to Orlando and enjoy Universal and Harry Potter World, right?
Yeah, John brings up a good point. We were one of the only, we were one of the only standouts. Our calendar committee did not vote for it that year, and it was a rough. We even had families just not show up because they assumed, because everyone else was on break. everyone else was on break, that we were off, too.
Yes, okay. So, so alignment is, is really a key objective, in, in my view, and, and the only thing that, that we don't do, and I know you work at West Point, and it's just because the calendar's between West Point, which is a, a higher education, um, institution and federal, and, and us is, we, our, our spring breaks are just different, and it's just, there's no way that you can get around that, so, um, but, yeah, I think alignment's important, and I know it's somewhat inconvenient, um.
Wait, I never heard of it before, I, other than New York, anybody, any high school, any, the, school districts do have.
Well, I think the relevant point is just the locally, Orange County, it seems that it does, so, and that's where.
Only Orange County, not the whole.
I, I, I don't know, but.
No, it's also very prevalent in Westchester and Dutchess, and just as a point of reference, too, it does depend on where the holidays land, so like, in 24-25, Christmas is on a Tuesday, we're probably gonna have a two-week vacation then, because you have Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day.
So that's why I never noticed it before, but I don't, I don't remember even like February break, uh, only this year, I mean.
No, this is our third year. This is our third year. And then it's always been in Westchester, it's always been a traditional week off, so it's something that has come into Orange County in the past three years.
And just to turn, turn back time a little bit, when I, I think elementary school and, and part of when I was in middle school, I remember we had February breaks, then at some point it was discontinued.
Yep.
Um, couldn't give you the exact year, date, but.
Probably had to do with the holiday for Christmas, because you don't have as many days.
Right, so, I remember it, and I know, I think last year we did it, this year, we're proposing to do it again, so.
And when I was in elementary school, we had, we had to, we had to bring our own candles.
Oh, yeah?
And we, we, we had to get up at five in the morning so we could come home and milk the cats.
Hashtag progress.
I couldn't help it, I'm sorry.
So I think, I think this, this discussion has reached its logical conclusion, unless Larry has something to add about his childhood.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna mention that when, Richard, when, uh, February break was discontinued for a while.
Yeah.
It, it became President's Weekend, but that was also a county-wide decision.
Okay.
So that, that, that's, you know, still in sync, because, you know.
So we were aligning ourselves with the county, what the county decided?
Right, you know, when, when you think about what goes on out at BOSI's, and just between C-Tech and Special Ed, and, you know, all the districts really need to work together on that.
Yep.
All right, let's, uh, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Motion carried. All right, well, that brings us to our, uh, one presentation of the night, and that is the second, uh, budget presentation from Harvey regarding the 2023-2024 School Budget, so I will pass it to you, Harvey.
Good evening. Tonight, we continue the review of the 23-24 Budget as we dive into the expenditure side of it. Keep in mind that the expenditure side itself really is the budget itself, it's, it's all the expenses that make up the budget. Though, in future meetings, we'll be looking at the revenue and the other funding sources that will be actually allowing us to expend these monies. All right. It's frozen. Here we go. All right, so before we jump into the number, just a couple of quick notes here. The first thing is, it's always important to reflect on what our budget goals are. Uh, we always strive and try to keep the tax levy as low as possible. The second thing is, we always wanna maintain current programs that we feel are necessary, and obviously, we wanna support everything that we do that is successful. As far as the budget process itself, what you're going to see tonight is really what we call the rollover budget, you hear me say it a million times, it's really the current year's budget rolled over as if we opened the doors on July 1st. However, do keep in mind that if there's expenditures or there's something that we don't need moving forward, it is not kept in there. So, for instance, if I happen to have a special needs student who goes to a particular school, I'm taking them out if they graduate. All right? So with that said, the budget itself as a whole for 23-24 is $85.8 million, that's up from the 81.5, almost five, for the current year, so it's an increase of 4.3 million. There are some outstanding items that we're still waiting on, they're not as significant as they have been in the past, one is some, uh, a variety of, uh, smaller, coarser costs from BOSI's, uh, the other is special education annual reviews, um, this is because the annual reviews go actually right through the entire budget process, so there could be some slight changes there. And finally, uh, what I call the final determination of transfer to capital projects, uh, we'll get to that in a little later on. So what are the projected revenues with regards to that? Uh, again, this is just a high level, we're gonna talk about the expenditures in depth, but I'm just giving you a high level of what the revenues and the expenditures are. So the revenue for 23-24 right now is projected to be 84.6 million, that's in contrast to the 77.3 that we currently have, so it's a $7.3 million increase, seems like a lot, it is a lot, but you'll see our expenses have gone up as well. Couple things to keep in mind, our maximum allowable property tax levy, this is not what the tax levy will be, this is the maximum that we could go according to the state regs, is 2.82%, which would be about a $1.4 million increase on the levy. What you see in, I'm sorry, and with regards to the 84.6 million dollars, that reflects only a 1% increase in the tax levy. As you'll see as we go through this entire process, as much as we tried to keep it to zero, it wasn't, it wasn't possible. The increase in state aid, uh, of that 7.3 is about $6 million, and we have an increase in miscellaneous revenue of about $700,000. That $700,000 is almost entirely relatable to the rates that we earn on our bank accounts. What's the open item here? The big number is the final state aid figures, which we should hopefully have, if the state budget is on time, we'll have it by April 1st. So let's kinda summarize what I just said in terms of what our, uh, from a high level, what our budget is and what our revenues are. So, our budget again is 85.8 million, in terms of the rollover. We have our revenues, our preliminary revenues that come to 84.6. When you compare the two of those, you'll see that we do have a shortfall without assigned fund balance of about $1.2 million. Applying a assigned fund balance of 2.5 million, that leaves us with a surplus of about $1.3 million. Where do I come up with the 2.5? We'll be talking about that in the funding side in, in a couple more meetings, but basically, this is in the range of what we always roll over into the next year from our surplus. Also, keep in mind, the previous meeting, we talked about our needs. You might recall that I mentioned that our needs were about 2.6 million. Looking at this picture, it looks like we're only able to do about half at this stage. Okay, so let's, let's focus now and dive into the expenditures. What is making up the entire expenditure side of the budget? Uh, they can be summarized into these 11 categories, and I'm gonna dive into each one of these, this sheet is really just a summary that you can look at at your leisure, um, but let's look at each single one separately. So the first one is salaries. Salaries are 41.1 million, up from 38.7, 1.3 million dollar increase. This represents all salaries, everything, any kind of compensation that we pay to any one of our staff members is included in here. And as you can see here, it's, uh, we have six collective bargaining units, as well as individuals who are not part of a respective bargaining unit. In terms of contracts, uh, we have two contracts that are, are coming up that have not, uh, we really haven't begun yet, we're just getting in the early phases, and that's with the paraprofessionals, as well as the food service. Everybody else is settled, which is good news. Let's look at pensions. Pensions is directly related to the previous screen, which is salaries. The pension costs have gone up just short of $300,000. Why, what comprises that, what's it made up of? We have essentially three separate pension plans that employees are part of. One is the teacher's retirement system, which is for all the certified personnel, and as you can see here, the rate came down in 23-24 just slightly. We have the employee's retirement system, which is the non-certified employees, and that one jumped up just slightly. And lastly, we have the, uh, social security, that stays constant. So obviously, as salaries go up, this will go up accordingly. Health insurance, we caught a good break this year with health insurance, uh, the rates, the, the, the premium pool for the Orange Oster Health Plan went up 4.5%. However, as I've talked to you about in the past, there's all different types of plans that individuals can take, there's family, there's two-person, there's single, there's two, there's three different kinds of Medicare, okay? Depending on the mix of what people choose dictates what the rate, uh, what the, the budget is. So as you can see here, even though the rates went up, the actual budget amount came down a little more than $300,000. Also note, we're also part of the NiSHIP Plan, New York State Employee, um, Plan, that is a separate plan, individuals can take it if they wish, but as you can see here, the state plan took quite a heavy, uh, increase, whereas our individual, family, and two-person and Medicare rates were, you know, you can see them up there, the NiSHIP Plans, those are double-digit rates, okay, it took a big hit, um, as a result, I can tell you right now that we don't have many people on NiSHIP right now, okay? I will also mention to you that contractually, if somebody chooses to be on NiSHIP, the OU Health Plan is the base plan, meaning if NiSHIP is more money, that delta, you are responsible for 100%, okay? So it benefits the, it's not only a good plan, the Orange Oster Health Plan, but it's also the base plan that anybody who wants something different has to pay that additional cost. Dental and vision benefits are provided to, um, the employees, but depending on your cr, your contract, um, will dictate who you use and what you're entitled to. If you are part of someone else's plan, you might be a new teacher who's still under 26, and you're on your parent's plan, you might be married and your spouse has coverage through their employer, if you so choose, you can decline coverage from the district, and you get what's known as a health insurance buyout, and that varies from 2,300 to 2,500 for the year. And lastly, you might be thinking, well, what do the employees, what do the retirees contribute to their health insurance? So for the active employees, that rate ranges anywhere from 10 to 20%, depending on your bargaining, bargaining unit, and for retired employees, they contribute anywhere from 0 to 50%, okay? Contractual supplies and equipment, this sounds like kind of a big catch-all, um, but as you can see here, it, it focuses on, those bullet points are really the crux of what is encompassed in here. What I can tell you is that, if, if you were to compare this to previous years, that 1.3 million dollar increase is quite large, but if you look at that, that bottom note there, there's really two things that are driving that this year. We do have two new special needs students that required one-on-one nursing, okay? That cost comes to $246,000 for the year. We also have the debt service pass, pass-through from BOSI's Capital Project, that's new this year, that's about $407,000. So if you take those out, we're pretty much in line where we've always been. Out-of-district tuition, this reflects the cost of tuition and related services for those special needs students going out of district. Out-of-district includes going to BOSI's day program, it includes out-of-district day programs to non-BOSI's educational facilities, and there are some students who are out of district on a residential basis. What's important to note here is that, this is just some, you know, general information to give you, the cost went up, uh, budget-to-budget, six, a little more than $600,000. We have five additional students in this situation, and when you think about it, you know, you might say, foot, okay, it's only five, what's the big deal, we have 3,000 students here. If you look at the average cost, okay, five students times those costs gets you to that increase. And if you were to look back in time, you'd also note that we've been very fortunate from a cost perspective that we haven't had a large increase in this area for quite many years. Yes?
Just, while we're at it, it's easy, students that are fostered or are li, going to school within our district, um, do we, i, if, let's say they're custodial parents or who are in another district, but these children are being placed within our district, do we get any funds back?
Yes, so if a student is a foster student, let's suppose you live in a district and you take in a foster, you're a foster parent, you have a foster child, okay? The District of Residence, where they came from, that we bill back, yes.
So it, it, do we have many students?
We, we actually don't.
Okay.
We used to have quite a few, because there was a, um, a girl's school, I'm sorry, a girls' boarding home right near the circle, the envelope circle.
Okay.
Um, I forget the name of it again, but, um, that closed down, but before that, we had quite a few from there.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know that takes some accounting, I was just curious if we had. Okay, thank you.
Shifting now to debt service, again, this is reflective of all the debt that the district has, and as you can see, it actually is down $125,000, which is good. Our debt will consist of the three items, we have the high school, uh, I say new building because I still think of it as the new building, um, that, uh, debt service is about 2.8 million. I will mention that, as you may recall, we refinanced that last year, and as a result, over the remaining seven years, we're looking at about a $90,000 savings each year, so it was quite significant, it was very good. Additionally, we have the Dormitory Authority, um, I'm sorry, the, uh, New York Power Authority, this is when we did the energy project in the district, the biggest piece of which was converting all of our fuel oil boilers to gas, and they're working great. So that, that service is about 432, and something new this year is this, uh, bond anticipation note. So this reflects the money that we're gonna be borrowing over the summer to fund the projects of Phase 1, okay? Why do we do a bond anticipation note? Well, as you might recall, the total project was approximately 23 million, we're using 5 million of the reserve, so that leaves us about $18 million that we're gonna have to eventually bond, but Phase 1 is only about $8 million. Why would I borrow 20, uh, why would I borrow 18 million right now? So what you do is you do a lot of short-term borrowing over the next, you know, two years, and then you roll it into a permanent serial bond, okay? So, the balance at the end of this year is gonna be zero, because we're not taking it out until basically sometime in July, and that would be an interest-only payment the first year, which would comprise of that amount. Okay? Next, we move to transportation. Transportation's a biggie this year, um, you heard me say at the beginning, our revenue's up, but so are our costs, this is one of them. We had to go out with an RFP for transportation this year, because our contract was up, and we had two, two extensions on it, and the transportation company, we use West Point Tours, they just could not continue operating in that structure where they would have to roll over and be subject to just whatever CPI was, okay? CPI this year is about, for transportation. CPI this year is about, for transportation purposes from the state, is about 6.8%. It's a big amount, but nevertheless, their costs are going up much more. The contract, the five-year contract, the first-year increase equates to about 21% increase. It sounds a lot. It is a lot. But I can tell you that it's a lot less than what most other transportation companies are charging. It's really just a tough pill to swallow because we've been taking care of, you know, at a lower rate. That $1.17 million increase, of that amount, $900,000 approximately reflects just the change in the rates. The other $270,000 is a result of a change in our transportation needs. You might recall, I just mentioned that we have five extra special needs students, okay? That requires transportation if they're going to a different school. Where do we go? As you can see there, we have in-district public school. We have to take children to private schools out of district. We have the special needs. We have the BOSI's vocational program every day. We have athletic teams. And we have special programs. It's a lot of miles, 820 approximately, 1,000. So let's look at each one of these so you kind of get a sense of, you know, still, that's a lot of money. Where is this going? The day-to-day in-district public school transportation, we have 25 buses and one van that goes on a three-tier system, which means it serves as each level, elementary, middle, and high school. We also have eight late buses that provide after-school program transportation at the high school and the middle school. Out-of-district special education, again, we use 18, I'm sorry, 19 buses and vans. We have 52 students to 13 different locations. And you can see there, they're in Orange, Rockland, Putnam, Westchester, and Sullivan County. There's a lot of transportation there. We have vocational programs to BOSI's. We have four buses that transport 98 students. This is one of the additional needs as well. We used to only have two buses. Now we're up to four because we have too many kids. Not too many kids, but we have too many kids for one bus. We have the non-public schools. We are required to transport any student within a 15-mile radius from their home to that school. We have 41 students who we transport to 10 different non-public schools in that radius. Athletic teams. We have 27 varsity teams, 15 JV, 14 modified, one freshman, and two unified. It's a lot of transportation. And then we have these special programs. The field trips to Black Rock and Sands Ring. Not a big cost, but it's a cost. We have regions testing days. Those are extra. Then we have two items here that's kind of interesting. We have what we call the walking wounded. This is any student who might be injured, and they might need a wheelchair van or something that helps get them up into the bus. What I can tell you is, and I don't know why, but this year, and there's a trend here, we're almost every day dealing with this situation. It used to be every now and then, we needed, we had to, you know, undertake a bus for a student who had crutches or something. This transportation is like going nonstop. It's unbelievable. We also have the homeless situation. Under the McKenney-Vento Act, we have to provide transportation to a homeless student within a 50-mile radius. Remember I said the private school is 15? Homeless is 50. So if we have a student who lives 49 miles south of here, we have to go get them and bring them here if they want to continue going to Cornwall. They have the choice. They can go to the district that they are now living in, but most of them continue to stay here. Again, with the current economic situation that's been going on ever since COVID, this is like every day now. We have a continuous group of homeless students that we are servicing.
Harvey, when it comes to something like that, how do we determine the accuracy of that? Because that sounds very tricky. I'm not saying it's not something we shouldn't provide, but how do you monitor, or how do you, you know, as I said, the efficacy of it?
Right. Anybody can easily try to game the system.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yep. And the answer to that is that we actually have a homeless liaison in the district. In PPS, it's Christine Chanelle. And part of her function is to stay on top of these individuals. She's in contact with them constantly. She makes sure where they are, that it's all legit. And there's a bunch of different tests, so to speak, that you have to keep asking the parents whether or not they comply with the regulations, and then they continue coming here, so. If you ask Christine, I'm always on her, you know. Anything new, anything new. I'm just trying to. And then lastly, we have this really good program here. The community-based instruction is for our special needs students, and it really kind of gives them vocational training in real-life situation. Two places that they go is American Filter &amp; Felt, and the Food Bank as well. Now we move to utilities. Utilities as well have increased pretty significantly. It's up about $250,000. Like your house, we have electricity, natural gas, fuel oil, propane, water, and sewer. For the most part, it's pretty much natural gas boilers, except for the district office and the buildings and grounds. If you look down below, you'll see that the cost individually, where the increases are being had. Electricity and natural gas are the biggies. We are part of a consortium, and that's extremely beneficial to us. The problem is that, you know, we go out to bid periodically as part of that consortium. That bid came up last year for one of the contracts, and it's coming up now for the next. So this is in the environment now that we're renewing, which is not very good. It's still favorable relative to what, if we were not part of a consortium, but the rates are going up, just like our own. The reason for water and sewer going down, we're finding that the usage levels are leveling off, which is really good. The trend is favorable for us. Occupational education. This has to do with the vocational programs that we are required to offer per state regulation. We don't have any programs in-house. We have to offer them through BOSI's. BOSI's has a pretty robust program. They have 34 different programs in what they call 11 different career and technical schools or academies, okay? The reason for that increase is twofold. This current year, we have 98 students going to the vocational programs at BOSI's. In talking with the guidance department, it looks like we're going to be somewhere at least around 102 next year, okay? Doesn't sound like a lot. It's only four, but that four is at the full rate, and then you have the annual increase as well on the annual rate, the COSA rates. And just as a note, you know, a few years back, that number was only about 72. So it's definitely going up. Insurance. Insurance, for the most part, is pretty stable. That $111,000 increase is almost largely due to, as I mentioned in the bottom, it's largely due to the increase in New York State unemployment insurance. Why is unemployment insurance so high? Why is it going up? It's not because of the rate itself. It's because of the turnover or the transition of staff that we have. You might recall, we've had a lot of federal programs, a lot of federal money. Well, that funny federal money dries up. We can't keep everybody, so they go on unemployment. Not because we want them to, but they do, and they need to. So we are under the direct payment method. So whatever a former employee gets paid through New York State unemployment, we get a bill for, okay? Transfer to capital. This is the final caption here. Transfer to capital is down about $541,000. Transfer to capital is, it gives the district the ability to fund in the general fund budget those small projects that we do not need to go out for a separate vote or a separate referendum, okay? We went out with a separate referendum last year for the big project. If we have small projects, we can just incorporate them into the budget. And typically, you do that, they're small, and you can do that because they don't dramatically skew the budget itself. So there's a host of different transfer to capital type of projects that the facilities committee will be looking at. Two of the ones that, I'll just say, the administration has looked at and felt that these might be the highest priority at this point in time is the middle school and elementary school classroom corridor door replacement. If you've been in most of the buildings outside of the high school, you'll know that most of the classroom doors are pretty old. They're dated, they're old, they're original. Additionally, a great number of them have almost half-glass, okay? So they don't really offer a lot of protection on a security basis. So what we would be looking to do is to do a district-wide door replacement and corridor, and standardize the doors. And because of the amount of money that this would, you know, require, we'd have to do it in two phases, okay? The first phase is $600,000. And again, it's the door, it's the frame, and it's the lock set. We recently had a security assessment. We only just today received a draft copy of the reports. Terry and I have to look at them. But one of the things that they kept drilling home, something as simple as, well, your lock sets, you have the thing at the back of the thing, you have to turn it. Yep, we do. And they're relatively new. And their comments were, they're good, they're fine. But in a state of panic, people fumble, and they can't always figure out something as simple as that. So what they recommend is the lock set just be a simple push. And we've all seen those, you know, you just push it and it locks it. So that's the kind of stuff we're looking at. The reason that the middle school and the elementary schools are only up there is because the high school, the doors are hardened and what we should have. The other item here is the district-wide security vestibule improvements. This thing's been lingering for years now, you might recall. This is the original grant that we got from New York State for $274,000 to redo the vestibules in all the schools. Modify them, I should say. And based on when we actually got approval and when things were in order, well, guess what happened? Inflation hit. And right now, we're in a situation where it would require an extra $360,000 just to get this done. These are important improvements. It's not something to just say, well, it's too much money now, let's put it aside. You know, just looking at Willow Avenue alone, we've had countless discussions about how easy it is for someone to walk in and quickly duck down or duck up, and you don't even know they're there, okay? So these are the things that this would prevent and address. This is the calendar, and I've done something a little different in this meeting. I wanted to lay out what the agendas will be in each meeting, and you'll see why. Next meeting, we're going to talk about revenues, fund balance, and reserves. So basically, how are we funding everything that I just talked about? On the 10th, we're going to be reviewing and prioritizing the needs assessment. This is a little different than what we've done in the past, and it's because we don't have the funds to fully implement in the budget that $2.6 million. We've only got about half. So there's going to need to be discussions. In the past years, we had a million dollars' worth of needs. We had a million-dollar surplus. Bingo. There's not much to discuss, okay? But we're going to have some hard conversations here. Something of importance is, Larry, you mentioned last time, and I know it's oftentimes on other board members' minds, that they see things, or they've heard, or whatever the case may be, that they'd like to bring forth as a need. And you asked, when can that occur? We want that in advance of this April 10th meeting. I've talked to Brendan, and basically, what we're asking is that any board member that would like something to be reviewed as part of the needs assessment, please send by this Friday an email to Brendan with that need. And again, try to be as specific as you can, and, you know, the rationale. We need this amount of time to really scrub it and maybe put a cost to it, figure out what it might run us, so that we can really, you know, talk about it intelligently.
And Harvey, can I just, yeah, anybody just, as Harvey said, submit it to me by end of day Friday before I pass anything? I want to just ensure that there are no duplicates or anything, but I'll CC the entire board on whatever consolidated list. I am not a filter for this. I'm just kind of like the one person that has to go through. And then Harvey and his team will actually put cost to it and tell us what that actually means.
Thanks. And then obviously, on April 20th, that's when the board has to adopt the budget. With that said, I will open it up to any questions.
Just a question about the needs assessment that was presented at the last meeting. So if there's questions that were, you know, that I brainstormed, would I bring that to you in an email to be brought up at the next meeting? Or is that something we can talk about tonight?
If it's something that we had already put on the needs assessment, you can certainly bring it up.
Okay. So I have a few questions about, I know there were five hall monitors that were being presented as a need, proposed in the middle school. And do we have, in the middle school, do we currently have any hall monitors? Or is that role, that role's being, the teachers fulfill that role, kind of?
No. So you have to remember that the teachers have, they have their instruction time. They have a prep, a duty, and a lunch, okay? Lunch they eat. The prep is their prep during the course of the day. But the duty is where the building administration essentially assigns them some important task within the building, which is typically like, it could be hall duty, okay? They don't have that, okay? The, well, I'm sorry, they have it, but the problem is that when the class is actually in session, okay? Kids are not moving between classes. When class is in session, there's not adequate coverage when kids go to the bathroom or anywhere else, you know, with a pass out of their classroom. And this is creating a tremendous problem, primarily in the bathrooms. The principal, Kate, has pleaded with us to give her coverage for these bathrooms. This is an age which you can imagine is, you know, kids are a little rambunctious, and we need that coverage. They need to, even though they don't necessarily sit in the bathroom itself, the kids know they're right outside that door, and that makes a major difference.
Yeah. Yeah. And in the high school, do they have hall monitors in the high school?
No.
No?
I mean, they have the duty periods.
Right.
But, you know, it's a much different situation up at the high school than the middle school based on the scheduling.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Harvey? I had, I had kind of asked about this because I was kind of curious about the hall monitors too. But I've also spoken to several different people in different school districts. And I know that we've heard this a lot, but I think COVID also has a lot to do with this, and behavioral issues at the middle school in particular, not just ours, but in that age group and all middle schools. And maybe it's from the timeframe difference of being in school and now being back in school at that age. But if I'm not mistaken, I think that's more or less what's precipitating part of this, is behavioral.
Right.
That we're trying to now, and, you know, monitor and get in line again from kids that haven't had any type of monitoring for a few years.
And I will expand that and tell you that what you just said is relevant for K-12. It's not just middle school.
Oh, no.
Okay? COVID really set back the behavioral levels in the district and everywhere. And it took the buildings a long time to get it back, and they're still working on it. I'm not saying they're far from where we used to be, but, you know, we're getting there.
Well, middle school has always been a real challenge.
Yes.
Hello, Caitlin. So, thank you.
Yes, pass.
Yeah, a question related to the out-of-district tuition. I understand what BOSI's mean, but I don't understand what's the day programs and the residential programs?
The day programs and the residential, sure.
The last two.
Yes. So the day programs means that we pick them up in the morning at their bus stop or their home, take them to the educational place, and we bring them home. The residential, these children actually stay there. It's a residential setting. They do not come home, okay?
Hey, Harvey, thanks for putting this together and walking us through it. I got a couple of questions. In no, pretty random order, if you ask me. But on the BOSI, so we're using, you know, the occupational prep more and more. That makes a lot of sense, right? Less kids are going to college, they're finding more utility, going right to trades. That's a trend that's probably going to be with us for a decade-plus, I would think, until, you know, pays and the like kind of even out. Is the cost per pupil at BOSI's comparable to the cost for us? For what we expend for the kids that stay here in Cornwall? I know specialized kids are I know specialized kids are totally different. Costs a lot more. But is BOSI's comparable or more or less? How's that work?
Let me give you a little insight on that. The CTEC programs are half-day. They don't go for the full day. Okay, they either go in the morning, and they come back and they have classes in the afternoon, or vice versa. The programs at BOSI's, the BOSI's programs cost, if, whether AM or PM, it's about $12,000 a year per student. Okay? So we don't, you know, our cost in district is, you know, however you calculate it, this is supplemental to that cost.
I'll use your term, supple- supplemental.
Right.
Yeah. It's an additional cost.
Correct.
Yeah, that we incur. Okay, no, it's important to know though. Debt service, I think the number that you showed there, which is an estimate, right? This is an estimate, uh, was about 280,000, I think? I might be wrong.
For the, for the bond anticipation.
For the capital project, your, your bank, or bank?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I got, I got banks on the mind. I mean, we've been dealing with a lot of stuff on that. But, um, so the bond anticipatory notes, uh, what's the, what's the implied, uh, funding rate on that?
4.75.
Okay, so you're trying to guesstimate where Fed funds are going to average for that period of time?
What we're, what we're doing is we're using the rates that are currently being charged for this.
And so the term of that will be a year?
Correct.
And as long as rates stay where they are, which they might, okay. So there, there, there's an estimate there, but in terms of significance, the, the dollar amount is.
Right. And I think, I think it'll be okay.
The minima, unless the Taylor Rule takes effect and short rate goes to 9.4%.
And I think we'll be, I think we'll be okay also because we may not end up borrowing, say, until, I may not need the money until August 1st.
Right.
So I only need 11 months' worth of interest.
Right, right. So, so, so based on that rate, it suggests that, that you're going to be looking to, to borrow about six million bucks.
Six million.
But we have five in the kitty right now, right?
Right, but here's the thing.
Yeah.
Yep, I know where you're going, why don't we just use all that money? The reason is because when we do our submittals to State Education Department, now, you have to remember that, you're hearing phase one, phase two, you kind of know what's in there. We have to submit to State Education Department for approval. Each building is a separate project. Okay? So if I'm doing all bathrooms in five different buildings, I got five different projects. Okay? The athletic complex up at the high school, that's part of the high school. Okay? So the point is, when we do that submittal, I have to earmark how much of that 5 million is going to each project. Okay? So I have to, I can only use the amounts that are associated with the projects we're going to do in that first phase. So I'm not going to be able to use all that 5 million that first year.
Hmm, okay. Okay, thanks for that.
Yeah.
The, the, the budget versus revenue slide that you had, I think you had two slides, kind of showed like a $4.1 million deficit between, um, revenue and the approved budget for this current year. I know, I know we tapped into, um, unassigned balances, uh, to fill the gap. Was it really for 4.1 million bucks?
It was, last year.
Okay.
Right.
Yep. Thanks. That, that, I get it. Go ahead, if you want to expand.
Nope, nope.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe I got anchored on the 2.5 for this coming year, I don't know. Okay, and then, um, this is kind of a hybrid question about salary positions. I think in the last briefing, you mentioned, uh, on a slide that there were new positions for the elementary school based on a new, I think, teaching model that we were, we were migrating to, and that those positions were federally, federally funded, um, which might suggest that they were actually new positions. Are they new positions, or are they just existing positions that we chose to fund using federal dollars as opposed to other sources of dollars?
No, depending, for the most part, the positions are new. And they're positions that you saw on the needs assessment because we can't, we can't rule them over. You may recall though that, um, last year, we did use some of the federal funds to pay for the AIS teachers. Okay? That was about $1.5 million that we used for that. And that is actually, that, so we took that 1.5 of federal funds, which we were allowed to do, and use it for existing academic intervention. First of all, it fit the description of exactly what the funds, the federal government wanted us to use it for. By doing so, we also freed up that salary that we were paying them of 1.5. So you might recall, we had a surplus, an extra surplus of 1.5. Okay? We used that, you might recall, for the middle school air conditioning project. That was what, is what gave us the funds this year. Okay? And that goes back to exactly what you said about the 4.1 million of, of assigned fund balance. We had extra fund balance of 1.5, which allowed us, in this year's budget, to have in our transfer to capital, that expenditure of the air conditioning.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
So, so if I understand it right, we're not really adding to teachers headcount? The FTEs are still the same? And they have been, um, prior to the federal funds becoming available? We just reclassified.
No.
How they were?
No.
No?
So with, uh, the federal funds, um, we presented to the board and the community how we would increase, uh, just to take us back, um, on a little journey, we started with a heavy focus on, um, TAs. We realized how difficult TAs were, um, to hire. So we came to the board and, um, and stated that we were going to make a shift to full-time classroom teachers. And we had a model for early elementary, upper elementary, and that push-in, uh, to meet in small groups and things of that nature. So they were actually additional teachers, uh, for this, uh, school year, utilizing federal funds.
Okay, so if I go back in time and look at, say, the elementary school, because I think the focus is all elementary school, right?
Yeah.
The majority of it, at least, at least for what we're talking about for this upcoming budget vote.
Mm-hmm.
If I go back in time and look at the number of teachers that were at the elementary level, at the different buildings, the number will be more this year than it was, say, pre-COVID?
Correct.
Okay. That's a simple way to characterize it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, Harvey. Um, where was I here? The, the pensions, TRS, ERS, and SS?
Right.
The rates are set annually by the prospective pension entities?
We have zero control over that, that is correct.
What magic do they do to get a 12.76% retirement?
Talk to the actuaries.
Well, like.
It's all, it's all based on their rate of return and what their needs are, you know?
What their needs are.
Yeah, I mean, they, that's what the actuaries do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And another, another brief question, a, a point of clarity. Um, you, we were talking about the homeless students in the 50-mile radius.
Yes.
Where are they originally homeless? I mean, if there are students to attend to.
Yes. So they are, they, they're, they live here.
Okay.
Something happens, their house burns down or whatever, now they have to go, and their only option is to move in with a relative. And they might be, you know, 49 miles away. They still have the right to continue going here.
I understand.
And we still have the, we still have the obligation to transport them.
I, I did ask the same question, uh, in the policy committee, and the answer I got was, like, as an example, house burned down. But again, now, I, I keep wondering, like, what other good reason would be considered since you mentioned that there's a committee that looks at, you know, how authentic the case is, but like, what other examples are there?
I'll give you a couple. One is, you might be leasing, and you fall on economic, hard times, you, you get kicked out. You, you have no place to go, and you have to go live with a relative. Okay? There are actually instances where a student can just leave their family for whatever reason. Maybe it's an abusive family. They are literally on their own. They have no place to go. They can go stay with a friend 49 miles away. That's a, that's a situation.
Family members can sign over rights, um, for their children to a family member. So Aunt lives here, Mom lives, uh, in Georgia, and, um, she signs over rights, um, educationally for her child. That's, that would be another example.
We did, uh, I think, I mean, this is, again, brings up, like, recalling that meeting, we had, this is where, let's say, and I gave an example, I said, like, a family living in Long Island, okay? And, uh, their uncle lives here. And they think wisely, well, they have better school. So they send their kid to live with his uncle. Right? And this is kind of like, I mean, it's not kind of homeless, but, I mean, I asked the question, kind of, I mean, should we support that kid? And the answer was, no, because they would have to give, I mean.
So I think you're, you're talking about it from the opposite.
Yeah, I'm mixing two things together, but like, how, how was that reversed, like, to, to, as you said, like, becoming homeless?
Yeah, so if they're just living with a family member, then we actually have investigations that we conduct to make sure that, um, folks understand that it's against the law to register in a district, that you're not, um, to falsify your, your residency. Because we ask for proof of residence, um, and things of that nature when they're enrolling. So there, there have been instances where we just know that they're living with a family member, but not actually with their parents, and we do our investigation and have them sent back.
Passing over legal guardianship is tough.
Yeah.
I, it, because I remember in Monroe Woodbury years ago, there was actually, there was somebody that was, um, I guess, a private detective, detective, that actually had to monitor school buses to see if people, because there was so, so much of that. But to actually go and say, I'm going to have my kid go to Cornwall, I live out in Levittown, I have to then go through the legal. And that, that's entailed with so much as far as insurance. I mean, it really affects the other family. And to do it just to send the kid to school is, is really going that extra 20 miles. Uh, there's so many different ramifications with that.
And just, you know, right on our website, under People Personnel Services, there's a whole, um, link there from a county vento, and it basically lays out homeless education. Um, it's a federal law, and it talks about temporary housing for, for children. You know, it's temporary housing based on their nighttime residence, it's not fixed, regular, and adequate. Um, some, some temporary housing could include, um, due to loss of housing, economic hardship, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, camping grounds, living in emergency or transitional shelters, abandoned in hospitals, living in a public or private place not designated for sleeping, living in cars parked, abandoned buildings, and so on. So if, it's pretty extensive. And then there's obviously documentation that needs to be provided to our PPS before any of this can be, you know, moved forward.
I do have one last follow-up as well. Um, the transportation of our special needs community to BOSI's or the in-service programs, is that through West Point as well? It's exclusively them, or is there other, other transport agencies?
No, it's just exclusively them.
They obviously have all the means and methods to get the kids there.
Yes.
You know, safely and such.
Yes.
So on and so forth. Including that 50 miles, or 49 miles?
Yes. And, and it has been a challenge. We've been very fortunate. You hear stories about not having enough drivers in other places. They've never, they've never not delivered, they've never had to cancel a single trip.
Yeah, I've never heard you say a bad word about them. You always, you always speak high praise of them. I appreciate it.
Harvey, do we use any of the, um, shared, uh, bus routes for students out of district?
You make a good point. We have, BOSI's has a COSER which offers, as Larry said, a shared route system. So to your question, Louis, um, there is that one exception. We do have one student who goes to a school that we share with other schools right now, and it's through a BOSI's COSER.
Harvey, how many schools other than BOSI's are currently, do our students attend?
For special needs?
Well, yeah, basically, yes. Not, not, not just for, you know, private school, special needs.
Yep, hang on, let me just show you. There it is. So you can see that a number of locations. So we transport, the BOSI's programs, there are three different BOSI's that we transport to in three different counties, and we have 31 students who go there. For out-of-district day programs, we have eight students who go to five different counties.
Okay.
I'm sorry, eight locations in five different counties is 18 students. And then we have three residential at three different locations in two counties.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Scheduling is quite a undertaking during the summer.
Oh, I bet.
Hey Harvey, uh, very quickly, I want to go back to that number that John was referring to, the 285,000 under debt service, the, uh, bond-related.
Mm-hmm.
Um, really more of an accounting question. I understand we have to, we have the, the 5 million that was in the capital reserve fund, we have to itemize each before it goes out the door. My question is just, that 285, is that, is that going to be a, a line item in this year's operating budget? Or will it come out of, because it was my understanding that it's a separate bucket as it sits in the 5 million, and therefore would not affect our operating budget? Is there a transfer that has to go on? Or am I just not asking the right question based on your response?
The, the $6 million, as I mentioned to you, we, we're going to be doing somewhere around, we hope to do somewhere around $8 million worth of work over the next year. The amount of the reserve, capital reserve that we'll be using is approximately 2 million, which leaves us with a shortfall, so to speak, of 6 million that we have to temporarily fund. This is the cost of temporarily funding that. Until such time as everything's done and we get a single bond, that, that everything is.
Got it. So it's a, it's a transfer, transfer is probably an official word, and I mean it more colloquially, but we're going to have to front some money and then it'll come back to us.
Yes.
Maybe years down the road.
Yes.
Got it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But just to, if I could just piggyback on that? However, the interest expense associated with the bond that eventually gets put together and issued, right, for the whole project, the whole, I forget the number, 20 some odd million? The interest expense for that, is it covered by the state, or is it covered by the taxpayer?
That's part of the state aid, building aid.
So wherever the interest rate is?
Whatever our building aid is, if it's 70%, we get 70% back on the principal and the interest.
NI.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Final question, um, was about those, uh, replacement of the doors at the Middleland Elementary School. Let's say this is included in the budget, budget passes May 16th. What is the timeline on that being completed?
Um, it would be over the course of that year. Obviously, the way I, we, we really haven't dug too deep into that yet, but the way I would see that happening is that we would bring a contractor on, and it would hopefully be done during second shift. Because, you know, otherwise, it, I don't think at this stage, if we, the budget gets approved in May, I don't know if a contractor would be able to even get the doors in time to do over the summer.
And this is, and, this is a new kind of finding for us after we approved kind of the capital project schedule. Um, and if you'll remember, um, the prioritization for the capital project was, how, how much can we get done over the summer while kiddos aren't, uh, in school? That delta being done second shift, now we're adding this new component on, so it really has to be carefully coordinated. So we'll probably have a more refined answer once we have, um, one, we have a meeting that we'll need to schedule with the board to review the whole, um, security assessment from Sergeant Kamar. Um, but two, part of that discussion will be kind of a newly defined timeline of when that, uh, can occur, because this is really new. You know, Harvey and Walter are just kind of, um, my ask of them was to get some numbers because we can't, we're, we're trying to balance the findings of the security assessment. I, I will tell you that, I mean, there was a, it's going to be one of the top, um, findings I will tell you that, I mean, there was a, it's going to be one of the top findings, because we went on every single one with Sergeant Kamar. But we do have some additional timeline pieces to work on. But I just want to let you know that this, we haven't been sitting on this for months, trying to, that's why we don't have an answer. It's, it's a layer on top of capital project.
Yep. Terry, could you clarify something? Because I, I recall Walter talking about this during the visitation committee, visit in November at Willow Avenue in particular. That was like the, the school that I remember distinctly he was pointing out to. What, what security assessment, the one that was done in January are you referring to, or a previous one that, yeah, I'm trying to
They were done, so it was a security assessment done at each school, but they all happened at different times. We, we had to reschedule some, so.
So somewhere during this course of
This school year.
Yeah, it's like the last three months.
Right.
Harvey, the, the, these projects, those, the transfer to capital projects, can they be structured as, as a project that can be aided?
They are aided.
They are?
Yes. The only time they wouldn't be aided, I would typically tell you, but it's typically the district office or buildings and grounds.
Right.
As long as it's a, an instructional building, it's aided.
So of, of that $600,000, we'll get
That's aided.
70% aided back.
Yep.
But just to clarify, because, but, but that will happen over the course of the life of the project?
That is correct.
Which would be 20 years, right?
Anywhere from 15 to 25, depending on the, the way the state amortizes it.
Right.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you, Harvey.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, I know it was mentioned, just so it doesn't, it's still top of mind to everybody, if you have specific needs, requests, or ideas, just email them to me by end-of-day Friday of this week. Like I said, my goal will be to eliminate duplicates and pass them on as closely to as-is as possible to Harvey and his team. And I'll, of course, keep the board apprised of all of that. That brings us to our second recognition of visitors. So anyone wishing to speak, invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Caitlin Nolan, Cornwall Central Middle School, 7th grade ELA. And middle school is a wild place to work, but I do love it, and I would go back for free, but don't quote me on that. But I do want to say, another shameless promotion, this weekend is Alice in Wonderland at the middle school. It's performing Thursday and Friday at 7:00 PM. You heard me, right? 7:00 PM, Thursday, Friday. 2:00 PM, Saturday. I will be there with my family, enjoying it on Saturday. So I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you again, Ms. Nolan. Anybody else? All right. Well, it's, I think, snowing now. That's what my computer tells me. So a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good night, everybody.